I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's nine o'clock and 3:24, 2021. I'd like Reverend Patrick Womack come forward. Please tell us how, if I'm lost, how do I get to your church? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Patrick Womack, teaching pastor at Bay Presbyterian Church, and we're on South Bay Drive. So if you just head out West Terry, cross over 41, turn right on South Bay, we're right there.
Okay. Will you please rise if you're able? Thank you.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we give you praise and thank you this day for your glorious blessings of life. For all that you have provided us, we are grateful. The Lord, as we continue to labor under this global pandemic, we pray for deliverance from COVID-19. We pray, oh God, that you might lift from us this burden of the virus, and yet we pray that you'll provide for those who are working for a solution and for remedies. And praying, Lord, for this council, that you'll grant wisdom and discernment in all the decisions that are made. Lord, that our freedoms and liberties may be preserved, that they may take their responsibilities in the way that you would have them to, and ultimately, oh Lord, guide them to make decisions that are pleasing to you, for we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing, as Fred Forbes is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
... pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Mother Debbie, can you give us a roll call?
Councilwoman Caramba, here. Councilman Purdon, here. Councilwoman Carr, here. Mayor Steinmeier, here. Councilman Corey, here. Councilman Gibson, present. Councilman Forbes.
Fred's here, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now approval of the minutes. I'd like to approve all the minutes, but I'd like to move our Kevin Ruane, our chairman of the Lee County Commission, to speak to us in the beginning of this meeting, if it's approved by our council. Any objections?
No.
Please, Kevin, could you come forward? Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Kevin Ruane, for the record, Mr. Mayor, council members, I appreciate the time. There's a couple of issues that I come before you. I'll take the easiest one first, and we'll move from there. Since 2013, I've come before this council and talked about managing Lakewood in the most appropriate way. From a little history point of view, Lakewood is governed by a Lakewood-Okeechobee release schedule back in 2008. We are graduating finally to what's known as Loosum, which is the revised Lakewood-Okeechobee release schedule. That'll take place in 2022. In the meantime, you know, the West Coast is really dependent on flows, not only during the dry season, but we do need them during the wet season. But we're kind of like Goldilocks, has to be just right. And most people don't understand that with all the infrastructure projects that are out there, they're going to come online and they're going to help us in '22 and '23 and '24, but we need to get there. During these pandemic times, I'm concerned and wrote a letter and asked you to participate. And just from a history point of view, just so you understand how the letter was originated. It initially was asked by Cape Coral and the city of Sanibel if Lee County would want to do the letter, and that's how it really originated. But the focus and the theme I'm asking you for is continued cooperation in, I think what we all say is we need to manage the lake properly. Okay? And managing the lake properly means during the dry season that they release as much water as they can, not to have harmful discharges, but to manage the lake in an appropriate way so when the wet season comes, they're basically allowed to put more in there. Unfortunately, the Herbert Hoover Dyke will not finish its restoration until '23. So we're going to have to try to get there to the end of '22, is how do we manage this in an appropriate way? So the letter has three asks in it. The first ask is to lower the lake. The second ask is to make sure that the, in managing the water inside Lakewood-Okeechobee, there's three outlets. You know, it goes east, west, and south. And east and west are coastal estuaries. South is really for water supply, and that's really what's there. Water supply is always advocated that we keep the lake higher, and, you know, they want to make sure they have enough for their crops. What they don't feel or realize is on the estuaries, both the east and the west, we have jobs that are dependent on, you know, water quality in this area. This is important. So what we've asked for in number two is to have a balance, to make sure that all water stakeholders receive the water they need. So the model that we've asked to do is have a modeling that would take into consideration the east coast, the west coast, and the south. So all fair about it. Our model is that Lee County has employed, certainly doing a great job, so it's really science as it is. In the meantime, you know, we also recognize that the third ask in the letter is one that we need to continue to move forward, and although C-43 is coming online and probably going to come online, we're hoping as early as '22, latter part of '22, early part of '23, it's not going to be enough. We're going to have to manage not only C-43, but we're going to have to manage the flows that come out of the estuary in an appropriate way, that we have a balancing act. And again, it's really difficult to do this, but I look at 2019 and 2020, where lake levels got down to 10.8 and 11 feet. The water supply never did not receive the appropriate water they needed, and we took the lake down to levels it's never seen before. Today, the lake is two and a half feet higher than where we were in 19 or 20, and it almost resembles 2016. I can't imagine today, in the pandemic we just went through, to have a summer of just massive releases and having the same thing we need to do. The one thing you have to recognize is as much as we deal with red tide, and it's been a phenomenon that's out there, the more releases and the higher releases are going to ignite and certainly fuel the red tide. So the reason for the letter is threefold. One, to notify the Army Corps of Engineers that we're putting them on record in March, that we think the lake levels are too high and it's unacceptable. Two, to make sure that when you're taking into consideration the various models that are out there, make sure you have all supplies of water that need water dealt with appropriately and fairly. We're not asking for any special considerations, not just what about the west coast? Let's have a balance. And three, in the meantime, let's look at Loosum in a way, in conjunction with C-43, and make sure that we have the opportunity to balance not only Loosum and manage the lakes, but C-43. That's the reason for the letter. I did talk to a few on the phone yesterday. I'll make one promise, as the chair of the county commission and someone that's been leading the water efforts here, I won't have any more emergency letters that come to you. I've heard you loudly and clearly. Again, it's a tough situation when you have other communities ask you to do something. I don't want to seem like, if I don't ask the other communities, what do I do? You know, if the letter went out from Sanibel and Cape Coral and the county, what would happen then? You know, would Benita, would Estero, would Fort Myers Beach ask why you didn't ask us to participate? And since I've always come here before, I don't think the ask is really anything different, although you do have new council members. I think we all principally have said since Penn Nelson was your mayor, that we want to keep the lake lower, we want to have appropriate discharges, not too much, not too little, and we want to make sure the projects come online. In the meantime, we need to manage this. So that's the reason for the letter. I'll pause there and answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you so much. The situation is that I, as the mayor, don't have the authority to sign anything unless it's an emergency. And on Monday last week, we had this letter, and I had to come into the office to sign it, and Debbie had to contact all the council people to get approval and everything else. And we're going to avoid that in the future, I hope.
Absolutely. You have my word.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your presentation and your time. You know, you really hit the ground running there. You went from Sanibel to, what, you guys, how many thousands of people in Sanibel? Eight thousand or?
Correct. Now I'm responsible, eight hundred thousand.
That's right. What a jump. You're doing a wonderful job, hit the ground running. And Sanibel, and all southwest Florida is involved with the water quality, and you're working on it, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Any questions from council members?
No. I just want to comment, I'm one of the council people that you approached, and I appreciate the time you spent with me, and I want to support the signing of this letter, and I appreciate your listening to my complaints about last-minute kinds of asks. And I'm glad that you summarized the letter in the way that we discussed yesterday, so I feel very comfortable with where we're going with this, and let's hope that Loosum does what they're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you need to take a motion or anything?
I'll make a motion that we sign the letter.
Can you clarify?
Wait, wait, hang on here.
Yeah. There's, we need to take any public comment if you're going to take any action on anything first.
I thought we were going to take action when Jesse's article come up.
For reference, could you please provide which green sheet we're looking at right now?
Okay, well, let's go ahead.
Is it 058?
Give me just one moment. I actually believe that possibly Chairman Ruane was actually intending to speak on a couple of items, and perhaps if you want to take those items up front, we should let him discuss all of them and then open up the public comment on those items. Or we can take his comments, and you can take them in turn as your agenda moves forward. But I believe there was more than one item that Chairman Ruane wanted to speak on.
Would you like to do that at this time? I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it. The second letter that you were asked to sign is for the Big Cypress Basin. There's probably not a more important lake in managing of water quality to Benita Springs than the Big Cypress Basin. As far as I'm concerned, Estero and Benita really need to do that and be part of that. Big Cypress Basin is, unfortunately, in the southern part of Lee County, there's not a connection where it allows the connection that's really essential. We're trying to work very closely with Cuyahoga, and it seems the majority of their council is certainly in favor of participating and working with us. There's a bill currently in the House right now with some amendments. The first amendment would be first and foremost that Lee County would only have one seat, and that's fine. We're fine with having a seat at the table. We want a seat at the table. The second is, we're working with the Water Management District to make sure the appropriate dollars and cents that are collected in Lee County are spent in Lee County waterways. We thought that would be fair, because we do collect a lion's share of dollars and cents. I mean, Cuyahoga's a much smaller community than us, and certainly want to make sure we just have the appropriate dollars spent associated with that. The third in the letter is, Cuyahoga has indicated they'd like to wait a year. There were some concerns about Everglades restoration and funding of Everglades restoration. I've talked to Drew Bartlett, the executive director. Drew and I serve on a task force that I was originally appointed to by Governor Scott and reappointed by Governor DeSantis. Drew Bartlett is the executive director of South Water Management District, as well as their chairman, Charlie Gotts, came into Lee County and talked about this very issue, and indicated to me they would find the funding associated with this. So the funding impediment is out of the way for Cuyahoga. The seat at the table, we've reduced from two to one, and the fairness is just have the dollars spent in Lee County, the collecting in Lee County on Lee County water quality issues. I had a conversation with the chairman of Cuyahoga County, Penny Taylor, yesterday, day before yesterday. They were meeting yesterday on their particular item. We're talking about having a joint meeting, hopefully sooner than later. So there's a piece of legislation that's on the floor right now. We'd like it to go through, we'd like to see it go and get passed, and that's the reason for the second letter.
And the resiliency. I think you were going to speak on resiliency also.
I can't hear you, sorry.
The resiliency pack?
Yeah, and the third item is the resilience. So the third item I came before you, and going to bring up a word that some people really have a problem with and understand some of the origins, which is a resiliency compact. It covers three issues, and as someone that has run, and it's no secret, since I'm 18 as a conservative Republican, there's three items in here. And the first item I struggle with, just because I really don't have the science aspect and appreciation for it, is climate change. The second is sea level rise, and the third is obviously flood mitigation. All cities within Lee County have now signed on to this compact. Charlotte has as well. Cuyahoga was doing it yesterday in their business, and we are. In having conversations with Dr. Severese, I have certainly had many concerns as a commissioner and the chair of Lee County. As much as we embrace it in Sanibel, the council's choice was certainly to do so, I need to make sure that, A, the compact represents a region locally, and that it does. B, the dollars and cents that are necessarily accumulated are going to spend on research here locally, and that's really what I wanted. The reason that it makes more sense that cities participate in this is that it gives the compact the greatest opportunities to collect funding necessary. I made on the record, and the letter I wrote to Dr. Severese, that after three years, and right now, there's not going to be any ask from any city whatsoever, after three years, there would be an opportunity to look at this and evaluate, and I assured him that if he came to Lee County or any of the cities and didn't find appropriate funding, that we would pull out, because I'm not going to support a compact that's not going to do something worthwhile for this area, and believe that if we give him an opportunity to start right now, the funding aspects will be this. So I appreciate the fact this has come before your council before. I appreciate the fact that people really have issues, and I still don't have enough clarity in my mind for any type of climate change information. But sea level rise, being the mayor of Sanibel for many, many years, and looking at Hurricane Irma and what the forecast initially referred, we're supposed to be underwater, and then looking at flood mitigation and the damage you had from Hurricane Irma, I think it's something that we need to take into consideration. Again, right now, there's no commitment from you, there's no dollars and cents, and I could assure each and every one of you that's been leading the water charge here, I'm not going to ask any participation whatsoever, but it allows everybody to have a seat at the table. Now, one conversation I had yesterday was, well, the county's responsible for this, so you can look out for this. I will, but I certainly would rather turn to my right or my left and make sure someone from Benita gives me something and whatever their input might be. So as much as it might be something that isn't politically correct to talk about a compact that embraces some ideals that may be not necessarily embraced by people with conservative values, I appreciate the fact that two out of the three things in here make a lot of sense. And the third one, I'll just put, I'm out there, really, really don't have any real appreciation for the third item, so I'm not really going to consider that, but sea level rise and flood mitigation are there. So that's the third consideration. Those are the three items, and I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and...
Thank you.
I have a bachelor of science degree from Penn State, and I don't see the science anywhere in this whole study, so I'm going to vote against it, but that's only me. Thank you. And that's my reason.
I have a question. I'm sorry, Kevin. I'm very simpatico with the things that you said in regard to the three items. Do we have any assurance that any, the effort will be directed to those two items that would have direct impact on our city? How do we have protection that the effort will be directed in those two items, rather than the first one, which is debatable?
You're 100% correct. I mean, I think the issue that we have, based on data that I've seen from Hurricane Irma, certainly would indicate that sea level rise was more than reflected in that study. You have study that's out there that indicates sea level rise was certainly a threat from Hurricane Irma. And flood mitigation, you experienced exactly flood mitigation with that. So those two items, there's scientific data. The reason I struggle with climate change, I haven't seen any scientific data that's out there. But there is a study from the University of Florida on sea level rise and flood mitigation, and those are things I want to continue to make sure we cover and look into the science aspect of that.
But the question is, how can we be sure that the compact will focus on those last two items rather than the first?
Well, I could tell you, as the chair of the county commission, those are going to be my concentrations, because that's it. I don't have anything, Amy, what I'm not going to do is make a promise I can't fulfill, and I'm just being candid with everybody. Again, this is Benita's choice. I appreciate everyone's thoughts on this. The idea of sitting at the table is to advocate for what you believe in and what you think the priority is. And if a group of people can come together on sea level rise and flood mitigation, and a group of people have some reluctance with climate change, then we should work on things that we can move forward. What government does really well is agree on the things we can agree upon and move forward, and why local government, and why I'll always stay here at the local aspect, is we have a much better chance of getting something done and moving something forward, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We here in Benita Springs have spent over $1 million testing our water mandated by the state, and we, we've been paying like $60,000 or $90,000 a year, and what they found out is the water coming out of Benita is cleaner than it is coming in. That's all that we know for all that money we've spent. That's all. What good does that do us? And now we have this student from FGCU going out and testing the water further out towards the, in the bay, and so, when are we going to do something? I'm sorry. Besides eyeball it to death. So that's my question. Are you going to represent us at this compact?
Yes, so the board of county commissioners made me the elected person. Regardless of whether I'm chairman, I'll be, the chairman, I'll be sitting on the compact itself. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your comments, coming from a city where we spent over $120 million worth of taxpayer dollars on water quality issues. It's been frustrating. I've been here looking for these projects. Unfortunately, water quality, to get the projects for water quality and water quantity, going to have a B next to it, and 18 is going to be before the B, so it's $18 billion to fix this. So I appreciate everyone's dollars and efforts. As someone that had, left the city with five biologists on it, it's very, very expensive, very frustrating, and someone that came from corporate America, I don't really have a lot of patience. Government really doesn't move at my pace, but I'm trying to adapt. It's taken me 15 years, I'm still adapting.
Very good. And I'm not a doctor, I have very little patience, too.
I appreciate it.
Counsel, I'll point out also that the compact does allow Benita to appoint a member to the governance board as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. Mr. Commissioner, it says sea level rise in here, and when you equated sea level rise, you mentioned Hurricane Irma, which would be storm surge. So my problem is that it says sea level rise, which they've been saying for over half a century, that Florida's going to be underwater, and I don't see any science that supports that. I believe in erosion and things like that, and storm surge. But why would we put sea level rise in here along with the other buzzwords, climate change? Those are my main problems, is when you include words like that, I just see them going after things that are unattainable and not, you know, proven by science, so.
Ditto.
Mike, the...
Are we going to have a discussion about this entire thing right now? Because if everybody's going to opine, then I have a lot to say, too, so.
Should we move on the two letter?
If not, let's let him go. But if we're going to talk about it, it's not going to be potshots.
He's still asking. We're going to do it in order. He's still asking Kevin. Is Kevin going to stay here?
I gladly answer questions, however you want to do. I appreciate it. Councilman Gibson, I appreciate your items and your concern. I'm not saying it's not somewhat valid, but the University of Florida does have a study, and the governor is now putting $100 million towards sea level rise and flood mitigation. It's coming from the top. So that's where money's starting from. It's his priority. He recognizes it. There is a University of Florida study. I urge you to do it, look at it, read it. I'll gladly forward it to you. It certainly takes Irma into consideration, which was the closest thing we have. So I know it's been talked about, I know it's a buzzword, I know it's something that, you know, I don't necessarily know that I'm the green person here, but in the same token, I look at the impacts, I look at the, what it does to our economy, and that's why I would embrace it. And I kind of align myself with the governor. He's pretty conservative in a lot of ways, and he's behind this. I'm going to line up behind him. The Speaker of the House is actually for the support, that's where it's come down from. So it's the governor, to the Speaker of the House. We got the call from Senator Rodriguez asking us to get behind it. So me personally, there's maybe some political pressure. I'm not saying there's not, but I'm going to certainly say yes to the governor as someone that's on his task force.
Thank you.
Candidly.
Yes, Fred?
Yeah, I'd like to make a point here. I'm going to support all of this, but I want to make sure that everybody realizes, the Speaker of the House is behind getting money for this type of thing. We're in a vote up there, and it's not a cakewalk to get in Big Cypress. Why? Because our taxpaying residents here are paying millions of dollars every year into Lake Okeechobee with no return. There is a linkage. I don't, I can't explain it, but there is. If one goes down, we may take Big Cypress with it. I just want you to think about that.
I don't believe that. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I almost called you Mr. Mayor.
That's okay. Always be a mayor.
Sure. Thank you for coming. I think all three of these issues are huge. Just to get to the compact while you're here, I wanted to say that for us as a council, the reason that I wanted to bring this back up was because I truly feel the totality of the circumstances have changed, because at the time, nobody was on this thing. So now we have a situation where we are literally, so we're thought of as the environmental stewards of southwest Florida. We have done everything from win the state stewardship award across the entire state, we just created this relationship with the FGCU for our water. We are a leader in water, and right now, we are literally the only municipality in southwest Florida that's not going to be on this. And to what Commissioner Ruane said earlier about the table, here's a political reality. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So when those dollars go out and we decide to be the fly in the ointment on principle, you don't have to agree with the entire thing. Any good deal, any good deal that you're going to get in business or in politics, somebody's not going to feel like they got everything that they wanted. It is our job to put the city in the most advantageous position possible, so we need to take off our political blinders and be able to tolerate a little bit of verbiage if it means that we're going to have accessibility to dollars for something that is the number one priority in our city per our charter. So I think this is a potential chance for us to reverse ourselves, to get back in better graces with Senator Rodriguez, to be a good community partner, and to not be the only one in southwest Florida not doing it. There's zero risk, there's zero financial components from us at this juncture. It's literally us being the only ones who aren't in it because we don't like the verbiage. Our job is to put our city in the best position possible by doing this vote to join the pack. That's exactly what we're doing. So I appreciate your time.
Okay. Jesse, is that your spew for your item on the agenda?
No. If we want to move the agenda item up now, we can vote on it, and I have more to say.
Well, we're going to vote after he leaves.
Okay. I'm sure. Yeah, that's easier, I'd imagine.
Yeah, I think it's important to certainly highlight what Councilmember Forbes said. This was presented to me by the Speaker of the House and indicated that Big Cypress Basin and the compact would be tied as one. It's what goes on in politics, whether we like it or not. So I can certainly assure you that when Senator Rodriguez came here and asked you for it, they were tied. They're more tied than ever before. So you vote as any way you can, you sit there, and I respect whatever it is. I will represent Benita Springs, whether you have a seat at the table or not. I'll be the person to come do, been doing water quality issues for a lot of years. This does have some parts of it that I don't necessarily really like, but the reality in politics is, unfortunately, we do make compromises, we do make trades, and when the governor asks, I can tell you right to your face, I'm not going to say no to him on something that I can believe in to some degree. So that's my rationale.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem. Appreciate your time.
Okay. Moving along here.
Do we need public here, public comments on that? If we're going to vote?
Any public comment on that?
I don't think we're voting on it now.
Unless you change your agenda, these items will be addressed in the general public comments to come.
So to be clear, we're pulling green sheets to 104058.
We're not pulling any of them.
Well, just putting aside, like, these are the ones that we're talking about.
Well, wait a minute. The next item is the mayor's welcome. The next item on the agenda? Do you have an agenda there? We need, we are representatives, elected representatives of the city of Bonita Springs. We all volunteered for this work, and sometimes it's fun, and sometimes it isn't. I enjoy being able to help people and make their life a little better. At this time, I'd like to introduce our city councilmen from each district, who were elected by their district, and I appreciate the people in their district contacting them with their, uh, comments, so I'd say anything that we can do to help. On, on my far left here, we have Fred Forbes, District, uh, Six, and then Mike Gibson, District Five, and Chris Corey, District Number Three, and Four, I'm sorry. And on my far right, I got Amy Karamba, now Wonder, District One, and Jesse Purdon, now District Two, and Lori Carr, District Three.
It's Laura.
I am Rick Steinmeier, and I'm the mayor of this, this city. I'm supposed to run this month, run this meeting, and, uh, so if you have a problem, you contact your representative. There's maps over on the table here that shows your districts, so you can figure out where your, where your district is, and who to call. Thank you, uh, we need your input, we work for you. Now we go to public comment. Anybody have a public comment? Come forward. Okay, and your name is?
Good morning, I'm Susie Valentine, I've lived in Bonita for nearly 20 years, and a couple of years ago, I spoke to the city council, some of you were there, about a wonderful project that I have been promoting and sharing for these many years, it's called the Blue Star Memorial. This is a project that was started right after World War II by the Garden Club of New Jersey, honoring the veterans of World War II. Since then, the National Garden Club expanded it to all veterans of any war, including those serving currently, and those who will serve in the future, which may be our children and grandchildren. The program involves marking, markers on highways that are designated as Blue Star Highways, and they currently are thousands and thousands of them in all 50 states. We've been working to get one here in Bonita Springs for a long time, and originally, they were intended to be in the median of a major highway. Well, the DOT has taken in their infinite wisdom, you can't put any kind of a solid thing there, but you could put trees, but you can't put any kind of a sign. So, we couldn't put it on 41 in the median where more people would see it, but we finally secured a wonderful position downtown Old Bonita, in the block that I call the Banyan Tree Block, where the city has its sign, where we have the rotary clock on one end, and on the northwest corner is now our Blue Star marker. We're inaugurating this, dedicating it on Monday, this coming Monday, the 29th, at 2:00 PM. You've all received invitations, some of you have responded, I'd look forward to seeing any and all of you there. We will have, uh, the president-elect of the Florida State Federation of Garden Clubs will be our most honored guest there. We have people coming from various veterans groups, we have Boy Scouts, we have everything covering all of our bases. It is an honor to be doing this, honoring veterans that live in Bonita, and live anywhere, and we hope to see you there. Are there any questions about this? Okay, hope to see you, 2 o'clock, Monday afternoon. Meantime, drive by and take a look. We planted it with local bromeliads, appropriate plantings, and it's going to be good, and I really appreciate the cooperation from the city. The city has been very, very helpful. This is jointly sponsored by the Gulf Coast Garden Club, of which I am a member and past president, and the city of Bonita Springs. So come and read the sign, appreciate it, and be grateful for all of those who have helped serve our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie. She also serves in the Tree Advisory Board, and is a former member of the Historic Preservation Board. Susie's very active in our community, uh, I respect her very much. Uh, anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, I'm sorry. Good morning, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Sophie LaRue, owner of the Survey Cafe and a member of the Bonita Citizen Group. We wrote a letter to Amy Karamba, asking for public input on what should be done with the city-owned land known as the Bamboo Village property. We want to urge all the city members to support these ideas. The council members, sorry. What is done with this property is very important for the future of the city, and the public must have an opportunity to be heard and their ideas considered. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ann. Along that aspect, John Dahmer is printing up, uh, big maps of that property, which I'm going to give to Amy Karamba when I get them at the workshop, and the people that are concerned about that area will be able to, uh, maybe color by the numbers, or draw what she, what they think they, we might be able to do with that property. So I'm gonna have that, uh, after this meeting, when, when John comes back with the, with the, if you're, if you're still here, I'd love to give you one.
Perfect.
Or we'll have them available for you. So, we're working on that.
Thank you.
It's very important to everybody.
Absolutely.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, please? Okay.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning. Morning, Bonnie.
Excuse me, I'm Bonnie Whitmore, President of the Bonita Springs Historical Society. I've lived in this town for over 20 years, and I've adopted it as my new home. So on behalf of 100-plus members of the historical society, we very much would like to be included in the planning and discussions of what you do with the bamboo lot, as we call it. And interestingly enough, in my office in the Lyles one day, a document showed up, which I have, which I will share with you, 'cause I didn't bring it, was the evaluation and what was sitting on that property in 1970 or 71. It has pictures and diagrams, they had their own sewer, it's very fascinating, and I've shared it with a few people, but I'll be glad to share that with you, because it's a substantial piece of real estate that falls into all we've been trying to do to keep Bonita downtown historic. So what we don't wanna do is to create another monstrosity that drains all of our public facilities, our public resources, which are people like you, people like me, who work in Bonita. It needs to be something that fits in with what's going on today. We don't want another building that sits empty, half, you know, probably maybe 20% filled. We wanna make sure that what we do fits the needs of the people in Bonita, who pay our taxes and support all of you. So this is in re, in response to Amy's green sheet 2103262. So thanks for listening.
Thank you very much, Bonnie.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I was driving over here, and I realized, uh, tomorrow-
That's Gary Price.
Gary Price, former manager. That tomorrow's my 25th, 21st anniversary, being involved with the city of Bonita Springs. And I came here in part because of its location between the Gulf and the Everglades beaches, Fort Myers, Naples, its people, and also the opportunity that Old 41 provides to make something very special in southwest Florida. Uh, US 41 and Bonita Beach Road are very nice, but it's typical of every other four- and six-lane road that you will drive on. Uh, Old 41 has a special opportunity to make it something unique. Uh, when I was manager, the county came to me and wanted to four-lane Old 41, to, to address the traffic. That would, in effect, terminated any possibilities for something unique. I asked the council to make a special effort to make sure that everybody gets some input on what happens with the bamboo property, Imperial Landings property, uh, before any decision is made by the city council. Thank you very much. I would be happy to participate and help you any way I can.
Make, make sure you get a copy of that map, uh-
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Here we go. Oh, look at this, a tag team.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I'm Trish Leonard, and I'm the newly-elected president of the Bonita Springs Downtown Alliance. I don't know about your clapping, but, um, we had a meeting last night, uh, well, we've been involving a lot of the city, uh, staff to come and educate us about their departments and what they do, and I think it's really helped, not only myself, but our, um, our members as well. But the alliance is made up of the downtown merchants and residents who live in the district. And one of the things that do come to our mind, or does, excuse me, is the property, and what's gonna happen to it on the Imperial River. We really want to be involved, we need a workshop, everyone needs to be participating, because after you all leave and your terms, it's still gonna be there. So we have to remember that, a big vision of what it's going to look like, not just now, but in the future. So I'd ask that you all be considerate of what's going to happen down there. And I do wanna say you have a great staff, because, um, we've had four or five speakers, and, um, as you see, I, I copy you after each, uh, meeting, and thank you for all that, and thank you for the council members that have attended the meetings.
Well, thank, thank you very much, Trish. Anybody else, please? Now, here's your opportunity to tell us where to go. I mean, tell us how to do it. All righty. Well, I guess we're up to, uh, number eight, Lime Tree Park. Uh, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, this, uh, Council, this item is a quasi-judicial item, so at this point, I would like to swear in any witnesses, the applicant and staff, anyone intending to speak on this item, please raise your right hand, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you. Actually, um, sir, I would, I would appreciate, we'd probably allow staff to come up, give a brief introduction of the item, and then have you come up and, and, and make your pitch. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mary Zizo, Community Development. Uh, so before you, you have a variance request for the Lime Tree Park Recreational Park community. Um, they have an existing clubhouse site that has a fenced enclosure for their current garbage and recycling containers. In an effort to change that, when they wanted to fix the fence and change their configuration, they were then required to come into compliance with our current codes, which would require dumpster enclosure made of masonry or concrete with gates, and would need to meet setbacks. So, within this variance request, they're looking for a setback reduction and a parking reduction, um, as they are not able to comply with both codes.
Uh, your recommendation?
Staff's recommendation is approval with conditions, and zoning board recommended approval five to zero as well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dodge?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I represent Lime Tree Park. My name is Bruce Dodge, and I reside at 111 Lime Tree Park Drive, here five months a year. I somehow draw the short straw and have to run this, try to get this thing built somehow. And we started on this over a year ago, and we thought we could just put some new fences around it, and we found out we couldn't. So we, uh, after meeting with your city staff, discovered that we gotta have masonry, um, we decided they can't have the gates in front of the parking area, so we're losing one parking spot, actually. Apparently, we lost some, maybe some years ago, when they built the whole complex in there along 41, 'cause there used to be parking on the south side of the building, uh, at that time. But, I've got a couple pictures, I don't know if any of you have looked at it, I don't know how this thing all works, but we'll try it.
So, sir, you're trying to improve your property, and the government's helping you?
Yeah.
So, to make it even better?
Right. Yeah.
You, you've been a community for, since 87, that's, uh, is that right?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, oh, okay. What am I doing? What am I doing wrong here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is, um, is the applicant, um, okay with the conditions that staff put on?
Yes.
Um, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve, second, with the conditions, of course.
I have a question. May I ask a question? Um, I've reviewed your, um, uh, application and, and the staff report. The only thing I'd like to have addressed, both by you and the staff, is that when I read the comments from, uh, people who I believe attended your neighborhood meeting, they were concerned about the lack of parking because, uh, and also the lack of handicap parking. Could I have some comment on whether you, I know that, in the, in the application, it said that you were not too concerned for parking, but the neg, the, the people who were opposed to it all mentioned parking, so I'd just like to have a comment on that.
Yes. Yes, there was, uh, if I recall right, it was only one person, or maybe it was two, that, that's concerned about it. The parking, most of the people in the park walk up to the clubhouse for, uh, things that are being tended there. Uh, the back parking lot where the dumpsters are, are hardly ever used, maybe one or two cars, but that's it. We have a handicap parking space there, and we also have a ramp to get up to the second floor of the clubhouse there. We've got what the, is required by, uh, building code for a number of, uh, very free parking spaces, so I, I don't know, I, I suppose we could eliminate another one, and then make two handicaps, uh, parking spaces, but anyone that comes up there, if they're handicapped, they're right there by the, uh, and we have, I don't recall of anyone that's in a wheelchair in the park at all, at this time.
Okay. God, thank you. Could I just have staff's comment on the same question?
Pardon?
Could I just have staff's comment on the same question?
We did receive those comments after the staff report was written, um, and looking back at Ariel's, we do not see a shortage of parking. Parking was initially reduced back when Lime Tree Park was actually developed, I'm sorry, Lime Tree Park Drive, um, so we do see that that's not really a concern for us.
Okay, thank you.
So the, these parking spots are not the only ones available for your clubhouse, is that right?
Correct.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Correct, they have poolhouse parking as well.
Okay, we have a motion.
You have a motion, a second? Mayor, before we do that, just open it up briefly to any public comment that may exist, and-
We have any public comment?
Mr. Dodge, well, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, uh, any questions from, any more comments from the peanut gallery here? Okay, call, roll call, please, Kevin.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda, can we have a motion to approve?
Second.
And second, any comments? We go around, uh, offer a vote.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Okay, we're all the way up to 10A. Anybody from Waldorf Engineering, uh, to address, uh, DeFor, Allison Trust, and the Shangri-La situation?
Good morning, Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering. Allison DeFor is here as well.
Hello, it's a, uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be back with you today. This is a-
Good to see you again, sir.
Culmination of several years of process, and I just wanna express our extreme gratitude to your staff and to all of you for your, um, forthrightness and cooperation in this. John Dahmer and, and Arlene and her, and her team have been absolutely fabulous to work with, and Alexis has been wonderful, and we're grateful to be at the, uh, end of this stage and, and have a canvas upon which we can now all collectively continue to work and see where things go from here. But it won't be empty tomato, what, packing houses, I can assure you of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Addison has pulled the plan up, thank you very much. Um, we'll be very brief this morning, this is the last, um, step in our compliance agreement process that we entered into this, into with the city several years ago. This is to deliver a master plan consistent with your, um, downtown form base code for property located south of Shangri-La, that will really anchor, um, the downtown area when it's, uh, fully developed. The, the plan that was included in your packet is, is shown on the screen there and shows four mixed-use buildings, um, these are in the Innovation District, so these would be intended for predominantly office, uh, some commercial, but really employment-based uses, but also, um, allows for upper-story mixed use, so this can be, uh, really a part of that downtown core vision, to have activity, um, on the streets. We also have some, uh, public open space elements built in, as well as what we believe is the required parking. Certainly, that's gonna be worked out as we get later in the process and reach the development order- in the process and reach the development order stage and know exactly what uses are going in which buildings. But we believe this fully satisfies the agreement, and we're happy to answer any questions on the plan and just hope you accept this today in order to close out that item. Thank you.
May I move to accept it?
Second.
Any other comments?
I just have a couple of questions. You, you say that this fully complies with the form-based code for that sector, including the height? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
All right. So you're allowed four stories. And then on the major building, there is already a building there. Do you envision renovating that or taking it down and doing another one?
Those buildings are in dreadful shape.
Uh huh.
So they're, they're coming down.
They're coming down.
God will take them down if we don't.
Okay, all right. That's nice. So then what will be done in the future is, you know, to show us exactly what it's going to look like and all that other stuff. So that's the second, the next step after this, when you go to the development order. But I think it's, it's very interesting. So I like what you've done here. And I like the fact that you have kind of an interior little street with some attractive vegetation. And I like the parking. So I think you've done a good job. Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? I have a comment. I happen to be in Shangri-La for the old 41 Alliance meeting months or so ago. And that building's 100 years old and it's in perfect shape. Your maintenance man is keeping. And if that's, if that's an example of the quality work you people do, you got my vote. Thank you.
It is our best example of, of our values. Thank you.
Okay, any other comment? Call for a roll call. Debbie?
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, as far as this, that letter on Monday, Commissioner Ruane, I'm sorry, if you could look up here, I have a birthday card from Kathleen Pasadena. We're close funds. So we signed that letter. We signed the other letter. Are we, I think we're going to have to approve the second letter and the third letter, but.
You would need, Mr. Mayor, you would need votes on the ratification of the Big Cypress letter. And then you would be discussing the second letter on the Laco levels. And then the next item after that would be the resiliency compact. So those, you should take each, each item in turn, as, as was raised by Chairman Ruane.
Okay. Mofus, Big Cypress letter?
Second.
So we're, right now, it's, we're on green sheet 2104058?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm in favor of this. Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, 11B, we have a motion.
Move the low subletter.
Second.
Move the letter.
A second.
Second. Any other comment?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. I'm going to vote for the letter. It's, to me, it's much like a lukewarm cup of coffee in the morning. I don't like it, but I'll drink it. The reason I don't like it is it's basically the same three points that have been made for years and years about Laco. And the elephant in the room is not being discussed. And that's the impact of water flows that are polluted from Big Sugar. I think that if I was the Army Corps of Engineers and I read the letter, I'd happily file it away, as it's not going to mean a whole lot. And it just continues to perpetuate what I consider to be a, a false narrative that the Army Corps of Engineers is going to do anything than what's congressially mandated to do in terms of flood control and managing the lake. So I don't have a problem with sending it. I don't think it accomplishes anything. And I wish it was written with a different tone. It doesn't talk about how we're going to know if there's improvements in the lake flow. I guess what's being said is that if we don't get blue-green algae, we're going to sort of be satisfied with things. But it, to me, it's a lukewarm cup of coffee, and it doesn't do a whole lot. I'll go ahead and support it.
Any other comment? I'd just like to say that any effort's better than no effort on trying to get control. Human beings really mess up, human nature really bad. But anyways, good luck to us. Call for a vote?
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
If you wish, we will do a cover letter to, to join to the, the letter as well. The, the letter signed by the county will do a cover letter for that that will circulate to you all. Additionally, you asked that at this time, if there are to be continued letters to come from Lee County at a time-sensitive matter, we were looking for some direction. We do know the, the letter on Monday, we dealt, we, we knew was a legislative priority clearly. So we were able to reach out to you all individually and sign that letter. If you wish, going forward, items that are on your legislative priorities or your strategic priorities, we can, we can do that same format. Those items that have not come before you before to provide direction on, we would bring in this manner the same way, unless there's any objection.
Mayor, Mayor, I, I'd like to comment on what our, the manager just said. I think for me, I'd like to actually see what we're being asked to sign, because even if it is in, like, these letters that we're sending, there were aspects to it that I didn't agree with, but generally I agreed with. So I'd like to see it ahead of time, so I could react to it myself. And if need be, I'd rather send a separate letter from the city when we have, as a council, been able to review what is being said, just as Councilman Corey just said. He might have wanted to tweak a letter here or there, and we would have the opportunity. If they give us a week or so ahead of time, that we would have a chance, you know, certainly before, meaning to look at those, even if it's on our priorities, because they'd all, they'd always say the right thing, you know, in my view, one that I could agree with. So it's more than just hooking on to our legislative priorities.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So I think we have our direction then, if that's correct. From now on, we'll, we'll provide, that we'll be, we'll be bringing on to our next agenda items.
Yes. You understand that, Commissioner? You understand that, Mr. Commissioner? Okay, thank you. I think you did. Okay, now we get into resilience. Now resilience is a pop back. It wants to spin, squeezed down is what the definition of resilience is. Any comment on that item? Jesse, it's your item.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for indulging me and hearing this again, number one. And as I said before, I really do feel that, you know, the situation has changed since we first discovered it. It was kind of thrown on us very quickly, and we didn't have anybody else on board. And I do distinctly remember one of the counselors who was against it. The reason was they felt it was a county issue. Well, the county has now opined and they're on board. So, you know, does that change their mindset? I don't know. But, and our mayor didn't have an opportunity to opine. So I appreciate this coming up. I think that, as I said before, with, with the bioreactor and the new relationship with FGCU and a number of other initiatives that we've done as a city, we have a stellar environmental record, probably the best in all of southwest Florida. We will be the only municipality in southwest Florida not in this. And there's no financial cost to being in it. But the risk to being out of it means that we're not at the table. And as I stated before, when you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And by that, I'm saying we aren't going to have access to these dollars. So when Senator Rodriguez came to see us, he was telling us, dollars are going towards resiliency, you know. And he was trying to get us to, solidify as southwest Florida and jump on board. And, you know, it was a little early. But I think now, with, with a little more time and seeing that we really could be out in the cold, this is a really good opportunity. And I just appreciate the chance that we can consider again. I really appreciate Commissioner Ruane coming all the way here to make the case for us.
Jesse, would you, can you explain what resiliency is and how it affects us? I mean, squeeze a bag and it comes back up, is what resilience is.
I think a better defin, well, you know, Commissioner, would you give us your best definition, you think, maybe for, for when we're discussing resiliency?
This is another layer of government. Thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. He's, he's better qualified than me on this one.
Yes, I'm, I'm a new politician. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kevin Ruane for the record again. I think it's the most important thing. You look at this as a regional approach. Resiliency, obviously, we're going to continue to evolve, and maybe that's a better word. Evolution of this is here. We're going to learn more about sea level rise. We're going to learn more than we can about flood mitigation. This is coming from the governor, okay? I don't need to say anymore. I work for the governor on a task force. I don't know that I have the same luxury you all do. And I'm not going to disappoint the governor when he's going to allocate $100 million towards this issue itself. So resiliency is going to come up, and it's going to evolve, Jesse, and I believe it will. There'll be more science. The more science we have, the better off we are. We're making decisions based on experts. The University of Florida study I read from cover to cover, it's 154 pages long, you know, so that's why I'm comfortable with this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Richard, I have a couple of comments. Jesse, you said earlier, at this juncture, it's not going to cost us anything, which doesn't guarantee it won't in the future.
Right, but he said, he said he would get us out if that was the case.
Yeah, pullout doesn't always.
One, one at a time, one at a time. You make your statement, and then after she states, then you can respond. Thank you, Jesse.
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead, Laura.
Just want to point out, pullout doesn't always work. But I'm opposed to anything that has in it that reifies, I'm sorry, climate change. So storminess, that works. Flood mitigation, all in favor of, but not integrating climate change, because we open ourselves up, I believe, to all sorts of environmental hits financially from different groups. And I don't believe in it. So if you reword it, I'd be interested, but no climate change in it.
Yes, Amy.
May I speak? I have some of the same concerns that have been expressed by others in regard to the, some of the, and when we first got this, I went ballistic in my mind. And I tried to, I tried to regroup and approach it as objectively as I could. I do, and I have read a lot of, well, I was interested in the government, the governor's statements, and how he has allocated a considerable amount of money towards this resiliency, which I think is just the ability for people to, to recover from a crisis-level event, like we have with COVID. We're talking about resiliency there, and this has to do with an environmental issue. I do, I have also looked at some of the science on sea level rise. And to me, it makes sense. But I don't, I'm not saying the sea level rises because of climate change, because I think there are all kinds of issues there. But the point I'm making is also in the material that Ashley sent us from the bills that are being passed in the legislature, there are two bills, both of which will have directors of resiliency, and I've forgotten what the other one is. So it's moving in a direction where I do think we have to be part of it. And, and, and previously, Lee County was not signed on when this came before us before. And I do agree that they are the ultimate responsibility here, because they have, they have a natural resource staff person. We, we do not have anybody like that. We are government light, and we have to keep thinking about what our role is and what that means. Means. So I'm going to support it this time. I have the same problems everybody has, but I think we should put a time limit on our commitment here. The, the Lee County chose three years. You know, if we want to do two years or three years, that's fine with me. I definitely think we should have an exit date by which we review whether they are focusing on the things we want, which is things that are directly related to Benita Springs. It's the same discussion I had about the water steward. I wanted that focus to be on Benita Springs water problems and not problems that are outside our regional, you know, that are regional. So this is the same issue here. If, if it turns out that they're not focusing on what we want, in three years, we should get out. And they've already made the commitment that there will be no financing issues for three years. So that's why I'm going to vote for it.
I'll accept that amendment.
I'd like to see the draft of the new letter.
Pardon me? What did you say?
Then I would like to see a draft of a new letter with the agreements that you're talking about in there.
Well, the only one I have is a time limit.
We're just, there's no new agreement.
Well, okay. Well, I did say I didn't want climate change in.
All right. Well, we, we can't do that, because it's already been signed by everybody else.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
I mean, you all know I have deep problems with this letter, you know, not believing in climate change, not believing in man-made climate change or sea level rise. A lot of those studies, when they calculate the icebergs, they count what's already under the water, which is already making the water at its level. So the science isn't completely right there either. But I do have a lot of respect for Commissioner Ruane, Senator Rodriguez, and very deep respect for our governor. So with the time limit on this, that way a future council doesn't have to make the, the hard political push to get out of it. It's already in there, so they can just, you know, kind of ignore it, and it'll go away if, if we need to. I don't want to support it. I hate that there's a quid pro quo with the Big Cypress Basin, because I very much so support that. So unfortunately, I'm having to make the hard decision of leaning towards supporting this, so.
Okay, any other comment? Yes, Fred?
Yeah, just briefly. There is that linkage between this and Big Cypress Basin. And I want to point out, Big Cypress Basin was unanimously, that letter approved by this council. So just think carefully about what you're doing. Because we need to be in Big Cypress.
Okay, well, I've lived, I've had property on, my family has had property on Benita Beach for 48 years, and I don't see any beach erosion. I do see in the north end of Little Hickory Island, where Lee County, in their wisdom, let them build, their condominiums too close to the water. And every 10 years, we have to put a beach back because of that mistake. So, any other comments? We call for a vote?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. I share the same concerns as Commissioner Ruane. You know, I do believe in climate change. I do believe in sea level rise. I've seen the effect of sea level rise in Benita Bay with respect to the, the waterways and our having to raise pathways. So it's not that I don't believe in that. What I really don't like about this compact is that it's more, to me, it's going to be a group sitting around a table, talking about ideas, talking about basically what we ought to be doing five years from now. And it's not actually accomplishing anything that we need to do today. It's the same problem I had with the Waterkeeper Agreement with FGCU last summer. You know, I wanted to find a way through that agreement to be able to come up with concrete ideas about how we can move water south. I don't know that we need any big studies to know that we need to be able to move water south. I don't know that we need any big studies to know that there's a rise in sea level and so forth. But there's a political linkage, as Fred says. But there's a political linkage, as Fred says. I understand that. I just wish the Commissioner good luck in trying to represent us. And I'll share his concerns about whether or not all the objectives of this compact are needed, but I'll go ahead and support it.
Yes, Commissioner, please.
Just to clarify the record, Lee County said we're in for three years, and it is in our resolution we passed. So if the letter needs to be clarified, please so for the record, it's three years and we're out if there's nothing of substance done. So we do have that opportunity. I want to make that perfectly clear for the record. It was three years. And we do have a commitment from Dr. Severese, there'll be no financial cost for us for the first three years. That's why I signed on to it. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Does that automatically sunset in three years? Or do you have to?
There's no financial commitment. So if year three, they come to us and ask for a financial commitment, we're out. It was that clear at Lee County's meeting. There's a financial request from Lee County or any of the cities, we're out.
Period.
So I'll continue to serve on this committee if they have other funding. I have no problem with that. I just didn't want it to be a cost to Lee County taxpayers.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have to make a comment on what Jesse said in regard to the financing, that the implication is that if there were grants available to do some of the work that we have to do in Benita Springs, that it would not be forthcoming if we did not sign this compact. I don't know if that's true or not. I hope it's not true because that's not the way government is supposed to work. And I just want to say that I would oppose any suggestion that that's the case. We're doing this because we're trying to act regionally and devise methods by which we can, if there is projects that could help to protect the shoreline or some of these, or help us with the flooding, that they would, we would work together to do that, so.
Okay, my last comment is I'm old enough to remember when we destroyed the ozone and we were all going to freeze to death. And so we got rid of all the R12 DuPont refrigerant in all our refrigerators all over the country. And I guess we saved the ozone because now we're burning up. So I'm voting against this. Do we call for a roll call here, please?
Did we get a motion?
We had a motion.
There was a motion in a second.
Yes. Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye, with a three-year limit.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Nay.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion was, what, Deb? What was the vote?
Five to five.
Five to.
Huh?
Five to.
Five to, thank you. Motion carried. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner, could you tell people how many people have been vaccinated roughly?
Oh, yeah. By the way, that is a Herculean endeavor. I really appreciate what an effort that has been. Thank you.
Appreciate. So last week, we, proud to say that we vaccinated 271,000 people in Lee County. There's 23,500 vaccines coming this week. We also have an increase in allocations. There's nine avenues to go to get vaccines. So it's Walmart, it's Walgreens, it's Publix, it's Winn-Dixie, it's Millennium Physicians, Lee Physicians Group, and Lee County. Please feel free to contact my office. We have hyperlinks where you actually have it. But by the end of this week, we'll be at 300,000 people vaccinated.
And we're still at 65 and over?
We're at 50 and over, sir.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
I appreciate your effort. What a Herculean.
And also, people who are homebound, they can call up and get.
So there's a group called Homebound Heroes. They're going around to homes. There was a group of them that went to Sanibel for people that obviously homebound, they're going around the county. Feel free to, you know, if you need any help, call my office. Listen, the further we get along with this, the quicker we have herd immunity, the quicker we get back to our lives. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, let's see here. Okay, now we're back on Bamboo. Amy Corumba, please.
You see the letter that was sent to. Very simpatico with the idea that we should have as much citizen input as we can get. I did, I do also want to, at the same time, encourage, because I understand, and maybe you've had this approach, that there are developers that are coming forward and they're approaching the city and saying, we would like to come up with an idea, or will you listen to us? And developers come up to me and said they're interested in, but we don't really have a process now on how any of this is supposed to work. The way it was left, in my understanding, is that the council was supposed to get together and come up with a concept or visions of what we want. This by the council, I think there's a lot of thinking and organization that is required for us to get to where we want to go quickly. And if you give me permission, I'll continue my conversation with Arlene, and maybe we come up with something, be that a workshop, be there some kind of, you know, mapping system that we could get people who want to have input to feel that they are part of the system. But we also encourage our developers to come forward and start to talk to us about their conceptual ideas. And we, as a council, somehow, we have to sit down and to say what we want to say. The only one that I know that's ever said, I said, I want to engage the, you know, engage the riverfront. But did anybody else say anything else? What are your concepts? You know, I think we need to make a list of things so that we really know what our dream is about. If we don't have a dream, how do we think we're ever going to get there? So I just want to ask permission if we can, I can continue the conversation with Arlene, or if you have a better idea, we could do that.
Amy, we have a public comment every two weeks. I don't hear anybody coming up here to comment individually. We're open to comment. I beg for comment every two weeks. What's not complicated is if you're a developer, you want to get involved, come talk to us as a whole.
But I don't, personally, I don't think that's the right way to do it. You know, I think we should have some structure so that any, just talking about developers, I think they should know that there's a certain period of time where we're asking for input. The same thing with the people. You know, in the past, we've had, you know, because of COVID, we're not even meeting together. We've had the opportunity to have things like charrettes and things like that. We can't be together, but, you know, in June, we will be. So it would be nice to at least have one of those things. I think as a council, we should at least have a review of the DPZ. This was like an illuminating to me because I went through all my papers, and there I discovered the DPZ form-based code for that area, which I know the council basically discounted it. I mean, I did, I was so disappointed with that. I thought, oh, this is so boring. I remember my reaction. But we never, as a council, looked at it and said, well, you know, this is sort of a good idea, and this part of it is okay, but we don't like the whole thing. I think as a council, we should look at that again. And I think we need to just talk on that one subject. It is so important that if we can't devote at least one meeting or one workshop to that kind of process, I think we're not doing our job. So I don't think, I don't think just having them come to public meeting in isolation for three minutes where it's not organized in a way where we can ask them questions and interact, I don't think that's enough. But, you know, I'm one council person, so it's the rest of you to just.
Jesse, you've got the floor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I 100% agree, public comment is one of the most important components of this entire process. And that's why built into this, we have four to six times that they can do that. Additionally, I think this entire, perpetuating the idea that there isn't public comment on these isn't something I'm comfortable with because that's exactly what this does. This insinuates they don't get four to six times to discuss it with us. So I don't agree with that, number one, on principle. Number two, I'm all about doing workshops. We had a workshop on Bamboo, and I'm not sure if you were there, but I heard some great ideas out of Councilman Corey, I heard some great ideas out of Councilwoman Carr, I heard great ideas about a lot of people. I mean, maybe all you heard was that you want to protect the water, but I heard a lot of good ideas.
Well, let's run it down.
So bottom line, I, again, I feel this entire thing is curt before the horse. What I'd like to see is something from staff that says what our various options are. To include a public-private partnership, what would that look like? To include protecting the park area as the mayor suggested, or the water area as a park, if we were to do that in the development portion. Deals we could make in the ramifications, like the second, the second time they came back to us, the developers, and we told them to go home, when they wanted 10 years' tax payment and a pony and everything else, you know, what are, what are we willing to do on that? And what do those things look like to us? I don't think we are at a point where we're going to sit here and do round and round with everybody in the world when we don't even conceptually know exactly what these things can look like. So I would like to ask staff to put something together that could go over the various options of what we could do down there. And then as we move forward, and hopefully we'll be in RFP, we're going to have ample opportunity for public involvement, as we always have, which is why it's in our charter the way that it is. That's why they get zoning, that's why they get two public comments, and if there's an amendment, they get six. So I think this entire concept here, just, it perpetuates the idea that we're not involving them, and I don't appreciate that. So I'm a no.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, John Dolmier is making up a blueprint of that property, which I'm going to distribute to Amy and whoever might want to look at it and see the dimensions and what possible possibilities, if you look at where the river runs and stuff like this, and you can share it with your friends. If you want more copies, we can get more copies. They'll be available. John told me he would have them at our workshop today, just after this. And let's go from there. It's like, I'm having to make 10 copies, and I'm going to keep one myself, and Amy will have one or more. We can always, if anybody's interested in seeing what's going on down there, we can give them a copy, they can color by the numbers or design by their head and come up with some ideas of what they think might work good in that company, in that process. And that way, we'll get a lot of public, a lot of public input.
Richard, I have a comment. I'm on more complying or concurring with Jesse.
Write this down. Write this down. Write this down.
Come on, it's more than once.
One at a time here.
Sorry, that was good, sorry.
And talk's cheap. Let's see what, you know, it's brought to us with some money on the table, and what are the asks, what are the gives? Because right now, you can color and put in all the pictures you want, but who's got the money and who's going to do it? So I'm glad we have maps. I'd like a couple. And I think that we are, there are different developers that are reaching out to us. No one's been concrete. And then when there's something concrete, I believe then we should discuss it. And clearly, we have very dedicated members of the community that will come and help us fine-tune it and tweak it the way it needs to be, that just enhances our city.
Okay. Well, we have one developer wanted everything for nothing.
Two.
And no taxes and no nothing. So that's not, it wasn't acceptable at all to us. I think if we go down this road that I'm suggesting next council meeting, I do think that our city manager will come up with something, and we'll hand out these blueprints, and we can all look at them, or your friends can look at them. We'll get as many copies as you want, and we'll get together in the future.
The concern that was expressed to me was the fact that a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Fred. I didn't see, I didn't.
Well, I, first of all, I do think we need to have public comment. I think that the other thing that we have to really do a better job on, that is, when do we go out again and really try and do something? Right now, there are a lot of people that I know that think that we're overdue for a period of rapid inflation followed by unemployment because of a lot of deficit spending that's going on up in DC. I think that whatever public input we get now, we need to refresh that public comment again whenever we decide to move forward. I think that we have a lot of opportunities with Bamboo Village. I think we don't want to, in a rush to get something done, accept something that we would not be happy with down the road and have to admit that we made a mistake. I think that we do need to have workshops on this. I think everything that everybody said at this table makes sense. We need to do have workshops. I think if somebody in the audience at one of our meetings has a comment they want to throw out, do that. The more discussion we have, the better. I will say one thing that I've said before, and I'll say it again. We may have all kinds of ideas, but what we get will be a function of what the economy is at that time, what the people that are willing to invest can get from commitments from big companies. It's not easy to get big commitments. In fact, that Midtown Shopping Center that we approved last year in September, they're sitting, doing nothing at this point. They're trying to market. They can't find a big interest in making big commercial investments at this moment. They do believe it will change, which it will. Part of it will change when COVID goes away and people get back to traveling and all that. So I just think getting public comment now and whenever we do do it is important. And if by some chance we have some developer come in and say, hey, I've got everything worked out, give me the deal, the deal he's, he or she's proposing is great, we still need to at least give the public a month or a month and a half to react to it so that they get their opportunity to say what they think, minimum of a month. So that's all I have said. I agree with, generally, everything's been said here today. And like Jesse said, there were a lot of good ideas brought up at that workshop on all kinds of things. I think everybody that made a comment, a suggestion, none of us disagreed with it. That's unusual. When anybody can propose something and nobody else disagrees with it, that's almost a record. And that was the way it was at that work. That workshop was very productive. And I think the only thing I would do is at the, either at the end or the beginning, give the public an opportunity to make some comments, too.
Okay, Chris would like a comment, please.
I think what we're seeing in terms of this letter is sort of a natural outgrowth of our workshop on this topic last month. I'm happy to see that a citizens group is interested in providing input. I've talked to them. I've encouraged them to get as many voices organized on this topic as they can. I think what's going to happen is we're going to receive proposals from developers to do something with this property. And hopefully, at the same time, the citizens of Benita Springs through this citizens group or other groups that may form will be coming up with their list of, you know, priorities in terms of things they want to see with the development of the Bamboo property. And at some point, the two paths, the developer's path and the citizens' path, are going to merge. And it's going to be up to council to try to figure out the best way in which we can try to reconcile both sides and come up with something that's most attractive to the residents, but yet still is something that's going to work financially for the developer. So we do need that input. I encourage people to participate, but I also encourage them to organize to do it. We can't listen to 150 different voices. It takes time, it's confusing, we're not sure who's all being represented by that voice. So I would encourage this group and maybe a few others to organize an effort to synthesize the thoughts of. the thoughts of the public and be in a position to, to share them with us at a workshop. While we're also trying to get plans from developers, we will tell you what we will be able to take out of your ideas, and what we will present to the developers as sort of a, these are the must haves. So, but I don't want to get the process bogged down where we're just waiting for input, and then we're waiting for some more input. I want to get, personally, I want to sort of get the train moving on the development of downtown. We've been at this for a number of years. I think it's time to finally set in motion some process where we close the deal and we get something done. So those are my comments.
Oh, thank you, thank you. A little irregular, but could I ask, yes?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to point out, since, since the workshop, I have fielded inquiries from no less than five development groups. I believe Mr. Dahmer's heard from some of those same groups and maybe more. Just to kind of follow up where we left off at the workshop, we got a lot of comments from, from the council, and you want us to look at possibly bringing back some ideas and what we could go forward with. I will tell you that so far, no offers have come, but there has been much discussion about submitting an unsolicited offer, which was one of the options I discussed at, at the workshop. I, I get the, the feeling from talking to the, those in the development community, one of the concerns that they have is a moving target. And so maybe the, my only input on this would be that, that there should be some consensus on the use from the council, or what they'd like to see, before we start coming up with the process. At this time, as I said at the workshop, and as obviously the development community realizes, they can submit a letter of interest or an unsolicited P3 offer without us needing to set up an RFP, but what seems to be more of the question is, what do we want there? Seems to be a bigger, bigger driver. And so to the, to the degree that you're asking for staff input, I think maybe what we need to do is come up with a vision first before we work on the process.
Well, that's sort of the direction that I was thinking about, and, and from my own education, I would ask staff to review the workshop and to list all the things that supposedly we all came up with, that we were in agreement with. I like to see them on a list, and I, in regard to the vision. I agree with Jesse that there are different mechanisms by which we could execute, and there's no reason why we shouldn't review them and say, this one I definitely don't want to consider, or this one is okay. So that's, but that's sort of at the execution phase. And I am in favor of having a workshop just on this subject alone, and if the others don't want that, you know, that's up to them. But I do think it would be important, because then we could again review the vision, say, this is what we all agree to, go ahead, receive the, and I think one of the concerns of the group that approached me was that they understand that there are a number of development people that are, might possibly give unsolicited offers, and they wanted to be part of that. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I, I hear what Councilwoman Corumba's saying about doing another workshop, and I'd potentially be open to that. I'd like to get the report from our first workshop back and let us, as the council, go over that before we agree to do a second one on it.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Thank you, sir.
Can we move along?
I think we have direction. What we'll do is provide a summary of the last workshop. Additionally, at a high level, we can look at what types of proposals you can receive, how that process works, because additionally, beyond just a developer providing the P3-type program, you've also got folks approaching staff now about the possibility of a partnership with the city regarding the land remaining ownership of the city. So there's a lot of different options that we've been hearing, so we can lay that out at a high level for you of what that looks like.
Thank you. All right, we're, we're set. Lisa Robertson, could you come forward? We missed you, or we were going to have, introduce you. Lisa, if anybody doesn't know Lisa, she started with us in 2003, I believe it was, and worked for, and got us off the ground as a city, and then she moved on to Estero and got them off the ground as a city, and now I think she's in Naples, but she has accepted a, a permanent position here as financial director of the city of Benita Springs. I'm so happy to see you, and she's going to overlap with Ann, so we have a smooth transition from one financial director to the next. Amy, uh...
Lisa.
Lisa, please say hello, or whatever, say something, y'all.
Hello, thank you very much. I'm very pleased and very excited to be coming back home to Benita. I was the first accountant that y'all hired, and just so excited, just so excited to see all the changes y'all have done. Actually, I watch you very closely, I'm just your neighbor next door, so I'm just excited to get in and work with Arlene and Matt, and see what we can accomplish moving forward. Y'all have accomplished so much, I just want to be on a team with you all. Thank you very much.
Very good, I'm so happy, thank you. Okay, let's take a 10-minute break. We're back on live here in Benita Springs. Okay, the next item?
All right, the next item, Council, is a second public hearing to consider a home rule development agreement between the city of Benita Springs and 9161 BBR and 9171 BBR LLC. This is for the property immediately east of the city hall. As you recall from the last meeting, the purpose of this development agreement is to provide some interconnectivity between Spanish wells and all the way over to the post office, as well as preserve some existing zirik habitat. At the first meeting, there was a discussion about a possible future parking agreement. I did prepare a draft parking agreement, that was in your packet. However, in discussions with the property owner and their, their representative, at this point, there are no actual designs for, for the parking lot, so it would be a little bit premature. And what I have provided to them is a revision to the development agreement that is not in your package, so I'll read the change into the, into the record. But on page five of the development agreement, the last two sentences, I've changed it, and I'll just read it out loud. "At such time as the West parcel is developed and obtains a certificate of completion, the owner of the West parcel will allow reasonable overflow parking during non-peak hours for governmental functions and events from the city's property at 9101 Benita Beach Road, subject to a separate parking agreement consistent with Section 4-1730 of the LDC." "The parking agreement will have restrictions regarding the city's use, time of usage, security, maintenance, and liability obligations." And so that is something that is acceptable to them, basically, this is, requires us to enter into an agreement, but at that point, we'll actually have a design, and we'll be able to work out some of the specifics that were discussed at the first meeting regarding security and other items.
Can you repeat the beginning of that again, about the non, about the timing?
Sure. The, the non-peak government, non-peak hour government functions and events. So in other words, when their facility is operating during normal working hours, we would not be using it for overflow parking, but the kind of events where we contemplate we may actually use some of their parking would be when we have the evening events at city, at city hall, when there's often a lack of parking. And at this point, what we would, we would expect is that actually city staff and personnel would park in the adjoining property, and it would be the public who would park at the city hall. And we would also provide security to make sure that, because of the sensitive natures of the, of the uses on the adjoining property, that there was no concern about the public wandering onto the adjoining property and causing issues there.
Yeah, that's all right, except for I don't want any city vehicles parked there when they're not supposed to be there.
Right. The, the agreement would not provide that this, this is a parking lot for the city at the city's pleasure, it would be only in those, those events in which we gave them notice and the, and the parking was delineated.
Okay, are, are we going to be able to run from the post office all the way to Spanish Wells entrance?
I, I believe that is correct.
I think that'd be a great improvement. If we could get through, past the Fifth Third Bank, we could go all the way to the shopping center, if we work on that.
Correct.
So I, I, where do we go from here now?
The applicant's here, if you want to hear from them. If not, we do need to open it up to the public for public comment before adoption.
Okay, applicant? Hey, Neil, how you doing, kid?
Good morning, Neil Montgomery, for the record. I, I don't really know that I have a whole lot to add. Derek's right, you do, I was concerned about the parking agreement, because under your Rule 4-1730, I have to know what the use is, I have to know what the design is, I have to know what the time the employee's going to be there, there's a variety of things I have to know that I don't know. So, and I want to, we all want to comply with your Land Development Code, so the provision that he puts in allows this to occur when we know the answers to the questions we're supposed to ask. So I think as Derek has revised it, it, I hope it answers all of your questions and, and your concern. Did you have any other questions?
Motion to approve.
I don't, a public comment?
Thank you.
Wait a minute, do we have any comments from the, from the peanut gallery here?
Who was that?
From the city council, do you have any comments?
No, no comments.
Okay, any public comment on this?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call, please, Debbie.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes, aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. City Attorney's Report, you, you don't have anything for us today, do you?
I do have one item, I want to touch on an item that we discussed at the, at the last meeting, regarding the, the lawsuit filed by Bay Creek and the Bayside Improvement Community Development Districts on our stormwater utility. Councilman Forbes, at your request, myself, Matt Feeney, and Arlene participated in a mediation discussion with the, with the representatives from the CDDs, and we believe we've come up with a possible resolution. That resolution, I understand, was shared with the CDD boards, and they looked on it positively. I would like to schedule in the future, I'll work with Debbie and Arlene to get everyone's calendar, but I'm formally requesting an executive session in the case of Walter McCarthy, James Janick, Bayside Improvement Community Development District, Bay Creek, CDD, and City of Benita Springs, case number 2019 CA 6567, at some point possibly at your next council meeting, just to go over the specifics of that settlement proposal and see if, if that is acceptable to the council. And that's all I have, I, I don't, unless, unless there's an objection to the request, I will, I will work to coordinate that.
Well, you're, you're a professional, so go to it.
All right, thank you.
City Managers' Report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like our Assistant City Manager to give an update on some transportation efforts. If you recall, Mayor, at the last meeting, you had asked us to give a brief update for constituent that had reached out to you about traffic concerns, so we did want to provide a, a very brief update.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. You're, you're welcome. I'd start with a few things that are fairly simple. The mayor's actually been working on some of them, as well as myself, regarding Lee County and Benita Beach Road. So one of the, one of the first things that is going to be happening here in the upcoming months is Lee County will be overlaying, putting new asphalt on a stretch of Benita Beach Road from approximately a Royal Road to in front of City Hall, where there are some manholes that, that provide quite a bit of relief and not comic in the roadway there. So they should be smoothing out that, that area. Recently, we reached out to them about another stretch of Benita Beach Road that is, the pavement really is in a distressed condition, from in and around the Luke Street intersection, really from Luke Street to about Mango Street. So the county has, has also accepted that, and will be around the same time as the, the work in front of City Hall, will also be repairing the road there with a new overlay of asphalt. So that should, should get rid of some chronic pothole conditions that we see in both the east and westbound lanes, and really make it a, you know, a nicer travel surface for the motoring public.
Yes, there's a new pothole in there today.
Yes. It's, it's, it's time to, to fix that area, so, so they, they've agreed. In addition, West Terry Street, if, if you drove through it today to, to come to city council meeting, really is complete. We, we have a few punch list items with the contractor, but they're, the, the general public wouldn't notice those. We did have a pre-bid meeting yesterday for the final stretch of Terry Street between Pine Avenue and the railroad track. We, if you recall, we did do improvements to the railroad crossing itself back in 2018, so this would tie into those, those improvements, essentially give us some very limited landscaping, but an eight-foot wide pathway on the north side of the road, curb and gutter, and new drainage, and then an overlay of the road as well, to provide a smoother surface for folks.
Do you own some of that property in that area?
Yes, we do, we do own a, we own two lots in that little stretch, and we will be utilizing one of them on the northwest corner of the Palm, of West Terry Street intersection, will actually be in corp, there's a bus stop there now, and so the path will kind of sneak behind the bus stop and incorporate a little pocket park type feature, as well as the pathway itself. So we anticipate construction start summertime, when school's out, and getting that completed for the kids before they come back to school next year. In addition, are really our major transportation improvement project for traffic congestion is the Quadrant Plan, the US 41 Benita Beach Road Quadrant Plan. There's been activities on two fronts. I like to describe this project as both a city-initiated project, as well as an FDOT project. So I'm going to give you the, the city part first, which is exciting. We'd entered into a settlement agreement in 2019 with the landowner behind the Public Shopping Center, and that settlement agreement had a lot of contingent steps, a lot of if this, then, then this, that lead to the city ultimately owning a large swath of road right of way behind Publix that we could then build a, a road for. So we maintain about $9 million in our transportation budget to complete that project, the acquisition, as well as road construction. And we have been in kind of the final stages before being able to acquire the large tract. So the, the final stage really is for the owners of the Public Shopping Center to turn over a few small pieces of property that allow for the major road corridor to be purchased. And Derek's been working with representatives of the current property owner, and we expect probably in the next two months to have those pieces turned over. When that happens, we will then go into full acquisition of the remaining piece and then pursue that project. Additionally, and concurrently, FDOT has been conducting a PDNE study to evaluate other improvements they can do at the intersection to improve traffic flow, and they will be reaching out to city council, you'll be hearing from Jane Swanson here shortly, to discuss preliminary ideas and what they have observed in the intersection, what they think can help improve and complement the work that the city has done and is doing. And ultimately, that will lead to, really to a, a final solution that will be presented at public workshops probably in the fall of this year.
Very good, Matt. I'm glad we're not sitting on our, sitting on our butt doing nothing.
Thank you.
I'm glad something's getting done, thank you, and I hope to satisfy the guy who sends me the emails all the time. Thank you.
Mayor?
Arlene?
Oh, I just have one question for Matt, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask a question? I take it that we wouldn't be able to put the road in behind Publix until the PDNE is, we, we want to incorporate it with what FDOT does, is that correct?
Well, not necessarily. We've, we have shared the alignments that we settled with the property owner on, so that they are well aware of those. They, through the PDNE process, they cannot, you know, they cannot have a pre-con... They, through the PDNE process, they cannot, you know, they cannot have a preconceived conclusion and they'll be very upfront with you about that. However, I do think there is an opportunity for, for both efforts to be in, in alignment, so to speak. What, what I think is clear is, is, you know, we would continue to pursue our settlement agreement and acquire the right-of-way. Whether we construct or not would probably be timed very well with FDOT's PDNE so we could have those discussions with them. You know, there might be an opportunity where, where we turn over the construction to FDOT, you know, with, with our dollars that we had allocated for it, or we build that piece and then they come in and make some modifications as they build the project, you know, in further years. I, I think there's a lot of opportunity and discussion yet to be had on that piece.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Is there money set aside, are we, some money set aside for this project?
We, we have currently in our budget available today, nine million dollars for this project. It's largely in anticipation of the right-of-way purchase, as spelled out in the agreement, but it also has some dollars, you know, depending on appraisals, that could be pushed towards construction.
Okay, any other questions?
If all goes well, what are we looking at for breaking ground?
I would have told you we'd already have broken ground back in two thousand and nineteen, so I, I think there's a, there's an element of, that's not very predictable. Derek's worked hard with the property owners. It really hinges on this turnover of property. If it turns over, it's pretty cut and dry, we, we walk into an appraisal process, the, the landowner will also appraise his tracks and we will come to an agreement. I don't expect that would take, you know, any more than eight months out of a year and, and after that, you, you could move to design on something like that pretty quick. So, you're still probably two years out and that's very optimistic.
Okay, now the Fisherman's Paradise property owner, has he have any, he's been, he's been cooperative with this?
That's who we entered into the agreement with.
Okay, now, the eagle, is the eagle still living there?
I'm not aware if it is, but the, the road is, is further south from those protective zones.
Okay, very good.
I, I believe the eagle has relocated. Right.
The what? The eagle relocated?
Correct.
On a, on a similar tree next down to the, to the same?
Well, maybe Arlene, my understanding is that his tree fell down in the storm and he went to another one where he didn't take. That's what I heard, but I don't know if that's the correct information.
Well, we got to protect our eagle.
Yes.
Okay, Arlene, do you have a comment on that? On the eagle?
No, I, I understand from community development that the eagle had relocated to another location, so.
Okay.
Do we have eyes on the eagle? Do we have no eyes on the eagle?
I've seen it, a couple times.
I'm just asking, okay.
No, but we all have eagles.
John, do you have any update regarding the sites? I believe that most recently, community development did an inventory of all the eagle sites that we have within the city that are on private property as well.
Correct. And we, we do do eagle monitoring during season, during the nesting season. This particular eagle, that's correct, had relocated, I, I had assumed the wrong place, but I was correct, and has moved across US forty-one over by a royal. That's where it's taken up residence, so we have to wait a certain period of time before you consider a nest vacated and we're in that time right now.
Okay, thank you John for clarifying that.
We had, we had heard from council there was an interest in looking at opportunities where we could set up an eagle cam. It looks like there might be some communities that have eagles within them, so at some point, the council members that are associated with those gated communities, we might do some outreach after we get some additional information of what could be done.
Do, do you have information about eagles in the private gated communities or just?
Locations, yes ma'am.
Okay. We do.
Okay, because I think we have some in Pelican Landing.
Yes.
You do. And as well as Benita Bay.
As the district two representative, I prefer a free-range eagle, but I'm just putting that out there, putting that out there.
Okay, very good.
Additionally, Mayor, what I would like to reiterate is a, a welcome to Lisa Robertson and it's in with perfect timing because you will be hearing shortly from staff to set up additional workshops regarding our CIP. We'll be getting to get right into budget season here very quickly. The, most of those, I, I would imagine, will be implementing some workshops in May to begin prioritizing the current CIP again. I will have staff members come forward with a few presentations from their departments to get some direction at upcoming council meetings so that we can properly prepare some estimates for those upcoming CIP items as well. Commissioner Rwayne did go over the statistics for the vaccine and I, just to reiterate, to date, as of February twelfth, twenty twenty-one, Lee County Health Department is reporting two hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty doses of COVID vaccine that has been administered in Lee County. Additionally, should you need assistance of COVID relief, those programs are still available by dialing two-one-one. Again, that's two-one-one for additional information. We are working with information that we're receiving regarding some grant funds that are be distributed to each of the cities. We understand that it's been identified by Benita Springs for twenty-five million, so we're working through that process and we will anticipate that we would be partnering with other local entities as well as possibly requests or proposals to assist the staff with what that process looks like. We'll need to come back, back to you with more information. Additionally, I wanted to let you know that we've extended the, a request for extension of time for the Lee Cares Act fund that we had for the city's expenses. It's not an addition in funds, but we understand that Lee County is now permitting, through the state and the federal government, an extension of funds that go all the way to December of twenty twenty-one. When we did a full allocation of those grants, we had a few thousand dollars left and we did have some additional expenses that we had into the twenty twenty-one calendar year, so we'll be looking to rectify to see if we can draw down any of those funds as well. And additionally, we, we will be breaking after this for our workshop on the current grants that we have. To reiterate, as well is that in that process, you will not be making any final decisions in that workshop. Anything that comes from that meeting would be brought back to a regular council meeting for a vote. So we will be breaking from this meeting and going into the old recreation center after our recess.
Yes, I've been reading that if you receive COVID relief or, or that you, county, state, or municipality cannot cut taxes because we receive federal money. Have you heard anything about that? I know some of the states are suing because it's unconstitutional, but at the moment, I am looking forward to an ad libarum tax cut since the property values have really skyrocketed this year and I would only be fair to the city and to the people of the city to, to roll back partially anyways, the rollback rate so that we come up with a little bit, give the taxpayer, property owner, a little bit of a break. But now, it looks like since we did have taken COVID money, that maybe we won't be able to tax cut. So this is a government overreach, so keep an eye out for that. Thank you.
We will. Additionally, just quick housekeeping things, I did want to let you, did make note if any of you saw that the green sheets do look a little different. It was our attempt at some cost-saving of printing of green. Unless there's any objection, we're going to move forward with that. And my last item, I'd like to just thank our communication staff. We did a trial run yesterday for the sound, implemented some new wiring and new systems, so I would, I appreciate their assistance with that and hopefully this has improved a little bit from, from the last meeting.
Things are moving along in City Hall?
Yes, yes, we're continuing, the window, the windows are in. And as far as I'm aware, our, our technology equipment is now back into the technology room, so the servers are back where they, back home. That's a good sign.
Yay!
So, so we're moving forward as quickly as we can.
Very good, thank you. Okay, now we're down to the city council reports, anybody, Jesse, Amy?
Hi.
Anybody have a report?
I want to say that I did, was able to attend the Benita Springs Concert Band on Sunday and it was extremely well-attended and thing, something that kind of surprised me, they asked by a raise of hands, who was from Naples, who was from Benita Springs, and who was from all these different cities that surround us. And I was so surprised how many people came from Naples when they did that. So I think we're doing a very good service. That's an incredible opportunity for people to get out because they're all anxious to be out and have some fun and they did a great job besides that. And I'll let somebody else talk about the Downtown Alliance because a number of us were here, but that was fun too that I did the other night.
Jesse?
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to take a minute to, to say, on the way here, I was listening to a story on the Colorado shooting and the officer who responded, the SWAT, first, first officer on scene was a SWAT officer who was killed in line of duty. This guy, he had seven kids. Heartbreaking, absolutely heartbreaking. So, I, I should have brought it up at the beginning of the meeting anyways, I just wanted to say that, you know, you know I have a, a very big heart for, for our first responders and this one to me, it's a big deal. So, my heart goes out to that family, seven kids I can't even imagine, and all the other victims as well. That being said, the only thing I really have for city business left would be, I've had a lot of people reaching out to me from the soccer community. We have a very, very big soccer community, for those of you who don't know, it's huge. We've won statewide awards for it, but really the kind of problem is, it, it's not the lack of the city doing anything, it's, we're, we're kind of built out. So at Marnie, if you're, if you're familiar with our Marnie soccer fields, due to our agreements with FPL, we can't do anything there. So we can't give them bathroom, you know, they want lighting, they want bathrooms. You know, we spent ten million on baseball field, but we haven't done anything for soccer, but the prob, where we're at, we're limited. So, I, I guess my, my question, or actually my ask for staff would be, if you could put together, you know, some places that we already own, I'm not talking about buying anything, I'm saying, any potential areas that we own that we'd be big enough to, to potentially consider the soccer folks' needs, that we already own, and then just kind of get us, get that back to me and then I can just kind of look at what we have. Maybe we have no options, but, you know, it, it's, it's a situation where they have, you know, kids leagues and adult leagues that we don't, we have more demand than we can keep up with. And a lot of these people, this is kind of their after-school program. So, you know, if, if there's an ability for us to do it or if we have it on hand, I don't want to buy anything, but if we have it on hand, I'd like to see what we might potentially be able to do there, so.
Jesse, is there any bathrooms at the?
No.
Oh, about?
They have porta-potties.
They do have porta-potties, okay, good. I wish I could have something.
Yeah.
Alrighty, that's an improvement over nothing.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So, I'd just like to see what we have available if that.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. Laura?
Yes, I attended the Benita Springs Utilities Annual Meeting. They're in great shape and what was pointed out by John Jenkins, the director, was that the, the folks who work our water aren't considered essential, yet they showed up every day, so an extra thanks to them. And there was a memorial for, well, at least mentioned for Frank Lyles, which was nice. And it's amazing that three months ago, the price of gas was under two dollars and now it's approaching three.
Exactly.
Eeks, okay. I don't know what's different.
Yeah, I noticed that it was a dollar eighty-nine or something at Seven-Eleven. I mean, yeah, yesterday, okay.
Yeah, I just want to mention that I had a meeting with Representative Botana and Commissioner Sandelli a couple of weeks ago to discuss the Country Club property north of Paradise, to get any ideas that they might have. And it was suggested by Commissioner Sandelli that perhaps what ought to happen is a request for Conservation Twenty Twenty funding of the purchase of that property. And so, I think I informally asked Arlene or told Arlene about the meeting and I've also mentioned it to residents north of Paradise, but it seems to be something that's attractive to Commissioner Sandelli. It's a large contiguous piece of property that could be used for not only stormwater management, but also would present an opportunity for passive parks, parks such as pathways and so forth. So, I'm hoping that we can pull together some sort of a proposal, I don't know exactly how you go about a proposal for a twenty twenty acquisition by the county using their Conservation Twenty Twenty funds, but I would, I would, since Baron Collier has now filed its plans for that property north of Paradise, it would seem incumbent that we, if we're going to do something with, try to get Twenty Twenty to acquire it, that we work on that pretty quickly at this point. So, I just wanted to mention the conversation that I had with Sandelli and with Botana.
And we, we did as staff, reach out to the county staff in a meeting we had this week on Monday to advise them of, of the meeting that council member had with, with Commissioner Sandelli and Representative Botana. They were going to give us some feedback back, they were going to bring that back as well.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Benita Springs Utility is celebrating its fiftieth year anniversary this year, so hopefully more on that later.
Very good.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, thank Tony and Neighborhood Services for coming out to the Downtown Alliance, meeting last night and speaking and answering everybody's questions and did a great job representing the city. I also want to welcome Lisa Robertson back to the city. Glad to have you back. And, and just wanted to apologize, I will not be able to attend the workshop after this meeting, but hope that you could forward the recording as quickly, I, I know it's probably just audio, but as soon as it's available, if you can send it to me, appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Fred?
Yeah, I would like to bring up something that I'm positive, at least I think at least there's three or four of us agree with. We've had no real activities, let me get these off, we had had no real activities in our parks that the city sponsored now for a long time. One activity that we did do, and I want to commend him for getting it done last year, which is fireworks, which our deputy mayor, that was his proposal and it got voted in. We have an opportunity, we need to be doing some things. We need to be letting people come. They can wear their masks, we can do the temperatures if you want to do all that. You're, you're rapidly, by the time we get into the middle part of the summer, a good bit of people will be vaccinated here anyway. And the herd effect is already kicking in, so I would highly urge us to have real activities in that park. And I'd like, I'd be curious to see what the rest of council thinks because, you know, we got to wait another couple of weeks before we have another meeting. Is there at least a consensus, at, at least a majority of us that feel we need to go back to some?
Yeah, I agree that we definitely need to have Fourth of July back in the park this year.
But I thought we opened it up to events. We don't have a prohibition against that, do we?
Oh, correct. You have special event permits that are all moving forward.
Right.
And I believe the Veterans Advisory Committee is having an in-person, in-person Memorial Day service.
They are? I thought they weren't.
Or is that veteran, I, I, Veterans Day, I'm sorry, Veterans Day was in, in person, Veterans Day.
Has the Fourth of July been canceled again this year or no?
No.
No, it's not, it has not been canceled.
The fire department is going to sponsor us again?
Well, there's two events, I'm sorry, for Fourth of July. The fire department hosts the parade and I have not heard any indication on their plans for the parade. We would bring forward through staff, this, the special event permit for the fireworks and a proposal for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm proposing like, things like the Outreach Committee had with Hispanics, that's a good thing, River Fest, anything we can do, even if we have to invent some things, I think we need to do it and it will help the business community get back to it.
And Outreach is planning on, they're actually looking at the RFPs the next meeting, so I think they're, I think they actually put it together in a way that they have a, a plan if we allow them to do it and then a plan how they would do it virtually similar to how they did it last year, so. I, but I agree with you one hundred percent, Fourth of July, you know, I was all in on that and I'm, I'm opening up and get back to business as usual as soon as possible, so I'm in.
Yes, part of the reason I voted against that compact Yes, part of the reason I voted against that compact is I want to hold on to our home rule. We're not a puppet, we're not a puppet, I'm not a puppet to anybody, so, and I don't see the science behind it. The other two, O'Koachoby, and I voted for those, but this resilience is too iffy for me. So anyways, anything else? Gee, we're down to get near the end here. Approval of the minutes from 3:321?
So moved.
So moved, a second.
Okay, they have a vote there. Debbie?
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ford.
Aye.
Okay, now we have public comment. Come on, public, we've got a whole bunch of them here. Come on, come on. Here we go. Hey, he got bored. He's just bored. He sees that camera, and he's got to come up.
This is why Tom Brady signed up for your extension, can't sit still, can't do it, can't do it.
All right, Mayor Simmons?
Well, good morning, and it's not the reason that I came to speak, but Rick, I absolutely agree with you on that rollback rate. If you look what COVID has done to the property values of Benita Springs and everywhere else, I think that is a good discussion to have with property values. But I just, I wanted to show my appreciation, thank you. That was a tough vote for the compact. And with all of our hard work that we've all done together over the years, it just would have been an absolute travesty to see Benita Springs left out of the process. There's a lot of questions, there's a lot more work to do. But with Governor DeSantis, and Commissioner Wayne, and others in the state, and Chauncey Goss, and everybody, and Big Cypress Basin, and everything on the table, I just wanted to compliment you for your vote. I have let Senator Rodriguez know already, I texted him and heard back from him. He's excited of the vote as well, and I also let Senator Pasadomo know. So I want to thank you. It's good to see many of you during, thank you for calling that 10-minute break, Mr. Mayor. I got to see just about all of you, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you. There's questions to be answered, there's no two ways about that. And some of that language was very tough for all of us. But thank you for your vote, it was a courageous vote, and keep up the great work. Thank you. God bless.
Mayor Simmons, did you find a job? Did you find a job, and how's Petey doing?
Yes, and Mrs. Simmons is happy, and Elizabeth is doing amazing at Florida State. And Petey is a little frustrated with COVID because the NCAA keeps pushing his date off. But come third week of June, he's heading to Ann Arbor, Michigan to play football. So life is good with Simmons household. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any other public comment? Anything else for the city? We have another meeting. What's it, the 7th of April is our next council meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you.